Of any formal plan to do anything.
Well, I haven't ordered them yet because the reason I haven't ordered them yet is because Chris Mayby from Delta said that he works with the DEC. The DEC gives out grants for this. They do it for Bangleton all the time. They give out grants for trees and pays for them for us. I talked to Cornell to find a street that will not ruin our infrastructure. And I'll tell you, Chad from the electric department said that he would come in and tell you why those trees are down. He would have no problem telling you because he said, I spend one whole month in the summer, every spring trimming those trees. And he said that so it wasn't just me, it was the light department, the street department, and the water department who made that decision. I just told, I just.
Okay, it's not a, it's not a complaint. As far as I'm concerned, it's not a complaint on my part of those departments. It's a complaint of us not knowing anything about it.
Well, and trees, you know, trimming trees is kind of nature of the beast.
Mm-hmm.
I have trees on my property.
I can get trimming. What's, what's expensive?
You know, it is, but at the same time, quality of life. I mean, we work for the residents of Endicott. We don't work for the light department head, the water department head. We do work for the residents of Endicott. Now, within reason, it is, and within reason, we should take them into consideration. Now, yes, I agree.
But that's why I warned them first.
There should be some sort of schedule for trees.
That's why I warned them first that it was happening. And that's why the Chris from the electric department physically went to their door to tell them.
I mean, my thought would be cut down every other tree, plant new, wait five years, cut down the other tree, plant new trees, something. So at least it's not clear cutting.
Of course, to be, to be honest, I thought there was three trees going down. I had no idea there was thirty coming down. The guy said, we want the trees that are bothering our infrastructure. And I said, okay. So it, I had no idea there was thirty coming down until.
Okay, so there, right.
I had three departments down there doing it. It was a business.
Right there is the, right there is the proof that we need some kind of a resolution. That you thought only three were going down and thirty-five went down. Nobody knew what the left hand was doing and the right hand. And so we need to, we need to form a, a plan so that one knows what's going on.
Yeah, because we, we should have had a number. But they made the decision. And when I was talking to Wade Beltran from Nightcom, he said, Mayor, that's their decision. That is their job. They can make that decision without you.
True.
And I did not know that until Wade told me. And so.
Well, we, we can also, we can also make that decision or override that decision if we knew about it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I had a tree cut down. Cost me twelve hundred dollars. Hated the tree, hated raking leaves. But I'll tell you what, I miss that tree now.
Oh, yeah?
That yard's wet. It's amazing how much water that tree.
That's why we're going to get new trees. And we're not just offering them to South Street. We're going to offer them to anybody in the village.
And you have to pay for it.
Mayor Carino did this years ago, and I got one from her. That's how I know. But Cornell, I was talking to the Cornell personally, and they said they're going to find trees that will not ruin our infrastructure. Because I've had phone calls, in fact, I saved them if anybody's interested, from South Street saying, Mayor, we're not calling here to complain. We're calling to thank you because we cleaned our laterals every other year. One night told me it was eight hundred dollars. Now, I don't think it was that expensive.
So this, this also needs, this also needs a written plan, Linda.
Yeah.
Of the grant we're getting, how many trees we're getting, what kind of trees we're getting, what the rules are for people who want them, uh, who, how do we get them to apply? You know, right now, we, we can't leave that just in your hands to decide that.
Well, that, that won't be in my hands, actually. But I have the information from the DEC first to give us how much money they're going to give us, how many trees we're going to be allowed.
And I appreciate you doing that. I think this is very.
Yeah. I'm glad you're doing that.
To be honest, guys, I'd rather bring stuff to you and have you help make the, the decisions so I don't get all the blame. So I really, I'm sick of that.
That's fine. Bring it on. We've been begging for you to bring it on for two months now.
Well, I have.
We'll, we'll take the blame. We'll help you take the blame.
That's always a good thing. That's always a good thing, yes. Hey, hey, my secretary likes the part about no lions and tigers in the village.
Does she know the story?
And I said, yes.
She does know the story behind it?
I finally told her, yes. And I showed her my, my alligator sign. I have an alligator sign in office. And now she understands the whole story.
That was the first thing you ever did on the board.
Yes, it was. And I kept bragging about it. And Ted kept saying, Linda, that's not something you brag about.
I knew you'd catch on, Ray.
I did. I, I laughed. Ted, that made my day. I'll tell you. And I saw that. She said, what are you laughing about? I said, I'm not gonna believe this. About the lions and the tigers. We all set for the meeting pretty much?
By the way, Linda, has anyone ever, uh, dealt with that, that rule or enforced it or violated it or anything ever?
Nope. And like, like Chief Siswell told John Certoni, he said, we're not going, like McCarthyism, door to door. We're only going to take care of tigers, or I'm sorry, tigers. Here we go. Boa constrictors and alligators. If somebody sees them, because Cindy Chitola told me that one time a guy was going around town with a boa constrictor around his neck. Scared the tar out of her. That's what the law was for. If somebody has it in their house and we don't know it, we don't care. If it's in the public, in the pub people, then we will handle it. And we have not had any problems since we made that law. People know it's there, and they just don't make it public.
I personally like boas.
My, my son-in-law does, too. Yeah, he had some.
I do.
But, but that, that now that park problem's done. I, I have a friend, a very good friend who completely attacks them. And he goes, I went to arrest a drug dealer, and he had his name. And to tell you the truth, I didn't go in that building. But now we know we have, we can arrest those people for doing such a thing.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what that law was for. But, but it was, I couldn't have chickens, but I could have an alligator. That's how that started.
I couldn't have chickens.
I didn't even have chickens. I had quail, and I couldn't have quail. I did not know that quail were not allowed, and that I could have them. But I don't want them now. That was my son-in-law. It's not me. So I think we're just about ready. So we can take a five-minute break, and then we can go back to our meeting if that's all right for everybody else.
Well, good to meet you.
Very good.
Are you on Ted?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay.
Are you off that?
Yep.
Okay, let's answer the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of prayer, please. Thank you very much. All right, we'll start off with Chief Gary wanted me to tell you that the community survey is open and on, and on the town, the town hall is tomorrow. The panel stage is available under the police reform tab on the police department website. And he wants everybody to take the survey and to know about it. He's on there. The, what they're going to do is they're going to take the survey, and then they're going to add it to their police reform report that they have. And on the eighth, they're going to bring it public. On the seventh, they're going to give it to us for them. Because we don't want it public until then. We're going to look at it. And then on the fifteenth, we'll be having our public hearing so that the people can voice more concerns or is, then they will take those concerns and rewrite the reform report one more time. The twenty-ninth, we'll have the whole all together. They will ring it in, and we will vote on it. And we need to pass it because it needs to be in Albany by April first. This is done by a number of people. I think there's like twenty that were involved. And it's a lot of very diverse groups of, Mike Corchak was there, Mike McVannis, our, our public defender, and the lady from the addiction center, a lot of peers, two peers were there, at least one peer was there. Those are people who have been on drugs and are now helping our, our police department, taking away with our police at night and counsel people. And Greg, Pastor Greg from the Cornerstone Church, he's our, he's our chairman. We had a couple of social workers. We had a lot of people from different walks of life. We had, we had Nadia, the lady I talk about a lot, who, who does, goes into the jails and does reform work like that. They, they were fantastic. And they spent, we spent nine months doing this. So they put a lot of work into this. I hope everybody gets a chance to read, read it because it very, it's very good. Our police department was doing ninety percent of what they were supposed to anyway. But this was mandated by the governor, and so we knew it. Now, I'm going to my announcements. And I have to apologize, they're so long, but it's been one heck of a busy two weeks. Uh, let's see. I attended a water, the room county health department already reported on our water system, and it found it to be in compliance and run efficient, efficiently. But it's not a health issue. However, groundwater is not acceptable to us as residents, and is being investigated with a new well without iron and filters. Hayes Avenue Pump Station is on hold due to weather. The interior of the second Pine Street water tank is being repaired and refurbished by the same company who did the first one. South Street wells were shut down last year due to high iron con, iron content and other materials. If we require more water in the spring to take care of the village, we can buy more from Johnson City at the same rate we pay now. Bestial Johnson City of Bangleton will be doubling their water rate. We may have to increase ours as well to cover the repairs and replacing a pipe and the buying of filters. Our gun tree testing has shown a completely good possibility for an additional well site. They need to do is a seventy-two hour pulse test and a water test. We are also discussing, we're going to set up a, a time to discuss with our street department and Luca Florio from the Town of Union, who doesn't know this yet. This is all Jason Shaw's idea, to discuss what in the world are we going to do when they redo the streets? We really need to do the water lines underneath them. Because if we don't, then they do the streets, the heavy equipment ruins our water lines. We had forty water main breaks last month. We can't, we can't keep doing this. So we're going to have to bite the bullet, raise the prices a little bit, and start repairing our pipes a little at a time. So that's, that's what our plan is so far. And so that, that's a lot of, that's a lot of Jason's help with us. He, even though he's not our legislator, he's the only one that actually helps us do things. He's got three or four plans. We talked about the village taxes to our GIA. People who want to buy a house in the village will know how much the taxes are. We even got a call today. We could have room county send out and collect our taxes for us. Most other municipalities do this. And as soon as we find out the cost, we will bring it to the board, and we can discuss it. Jason also shared a concern. Endwell does have the state police right there, and they do call, have the sheriff, they need to. But they don't respond to calls like our police do. Police Chief Gary, and I started looking into expanding this with a contract last year to cover these areas. Of course, COVID kind of messed this up, and now he's got the police reform to work on. But Eileen has offered to work with Police Chief Gary once we get this police reform thing done to see if we can't come up with an idea like Johnson City has with Westover, where they take care of police and fire protection. Because we can't do it for free. But if they want to enter into a contract, and we can make some decisions within the board by November, maybe they can put it on their, so to vote on it. Because they have to vote on it if they're going to pay us. So we're going to do all the investigating, and then we, and Eileen will bring board. I was visited by three gentlemen from Bangladesh. They and their community have moved to Endicott. There's about fifty people now in our community. They're, they're, they bought property, and they're actually working here. They've asked for myself and Police Chief Gary to go to their mosque next month to their meeting, to meet with their community, given it's one of our police reform outreach. And they, they want to be part of the community, and they want to offer their services. So I was very impressed with them. That's very nice of them. So I was very honored to accept that, that, that invitation. March second, the police reform committee will be hosting a town hall meeting to present their draft and gather comments. So that's tomorrow night. Please, everyone go on the website and, and get on it, and whatever you want to ask or make comments on, we, we would welcome everybody talking about that. I want to thank all this whole group for their, their wonderful dedication. On March twenty-ninth, we will be having a special meeting to approve this by the board so we can send it to the governor by his April first deadline. If we don't, we lose our funding from Albany, and that's a very big deal. Now, I, I spoke to Endicott Proud. They asked me to give a report each month on what's happening in the village, and they asked me about the ten-point plan. Since a lot of this has been completed, I just felt it was a time saver, time saver to combine it. And of course, I've always talked about all this, and stated the village report. But I don't have any familiar information on that. That was all brand new. I am familiar with the soon-to-be-completed housing vision, affordable housing on Jackson Avenue, however. We'll have a case complex beginning in April. Also, Housing Vision is looking for another property in the village to develop as a high-end apartment complex with amenities like a weight room, a coffee shop, and a restaurant. This company has proved to be a very accommodating to work with. They're, they're great. I have their numbers, they answer it right away. They, they fixed a couple of problems with our water when we had a water pipe problem. They are not asking for any pilots, pilots or village credits. Everything they get comes through the state, so it's not going to cost us any. So I was real happy with them. I want to thank the Endicott Proud for their continued support with our village and their new committees they're forming to help drive business, business, district. Three, these businesses and restaurants have suffered greatly during the pandemic. And a big thank you to my secretary for calling and going to the avenue to offer help during this time. Alicia and I will be continuing something I started last year. Where's the mayor on Friday? We'll, we will be visiting businesses in the village and highlighting some each week, so that way they get free publicity. I attended a Zoom meeting with the Room County Land Bank. They voted unanimously to demolish our 108 Roosevelt for the village. Demolition is planned for sometime in June. Chair Aaron Martin asked me to extend his appreciation to the whole village, to the attorney, and to man, managing, contributing to this cause. This contribution helped fund future projects. They are, we're only going to do four this year, and now they can do a fifth one because we helped with our, our part of it. So he wants, he wants me over and over, and he must have asked me three times to make sure I extend his thanks. But I want to tell you very emphatically, Aaron Martin is very, very thankful. So thank you. I was invite, I was honored to be invited to the Endicott Auxiliary Police Meeting and Awards Night. We have a great bunch of volunteers to aid our police, the village activities, and they assist during emergencies. They were gracious enough to explain a lot about their organization and offered to help us in the village in any way. And I take it you're going to start going to those meetings for me. Thank you. And, and if anybody knows of anything we could use the for, if you, for example, with the parks, if you have any events, just let them know. And they are very, very happy to help. They're looking for projects.
In a mo, moment notice, too. They're quick.
Yeah, they were bored last year, so they love to help. I had a meeting with Paul Stratton, who's the senior vice president of Imperium Three. He was here from Connecticut, but he will be moving here soon. He's looking for a house, and he said the inventory is down. He had an awful time finding one. But Imperium Three is talking to Bangleton University about graduate students to work in Imperium Three. They can take engineering students and train them to run their machinery. Mr. Stratton was also talking to the Ford Motor Company about getting a contract to supply their batteries. It'll take about five years to be vetted and start working for them. Imperium, Imperium must work and get their suppliers to come to Endicott because then, because Ford said, we won't do business with any company that doesn't have their suppliers on site. We're not going to wait until you get around to getting the parts in. We want to know that you can go next door and grab them. So they're going to be concentrating now on bringing their suppliers here. And that's going to be very good for us in Endicott. This means a lot more business and jobs for our area. Mr. Stratton is extremely interested in working with the other professionals on repairing the village reputation. He's going to be in Gay Cana's committee that she's setting up through Endicott Rotary. Jason Garner will be delivering his State of the County report on March fifteenth at six o'clock. We're going to let him go first since I had to make an appointment with him to actually get his speech. So I know nobody will mind. And it's kind of nice to know what's going on in the county and what their finances are. That's, that's very interesting to us. The governor has extended his COVID state of emergency to March twenty-fifth, and my guess is we're going to be going long past that. Our carousel has been repaired. I just got this information this morning. The street department is now putting it back together. This was a very big job.
Huge.
And it's taken them a long time. It may take till the end of April. We have no decision yet on when or if we can open the carousel for the public. But tomorrow, we're going to be talking to the UE school and ask if their participation in government class can start working on, now, we're giving them a job to see if they can't work out something out of the box on how we can do this. For example, with an idea of having like three horses on the outside, on the first row, and the single one on the middle. It's something that would be easy with families, with kids and stuff. You have to wipe down the horses after each one. So we don't know what we're going to do. But we do have an event that's probably occurring in May. So we will be opening the carousel for that event, and we may have to just do a lottery for people riding it. And we will have our police auxiliary. We've already asked if we do have a date for the event, if they'll go up there.
I think that's great that you included the schools.
Oh, well, Alicia comes up with all these ideas. You know, it's, it's great to have young blood. And she, she, like, like you with your young blood, with all these committees. I love it. We need new blood in here. It's terrific. I'm just too old to do all of it. Now, because we could not open our pool last year, the street department used that money that we had set aside for the lifeguard to replace all the stands in our filter. It was thousands of dollars to replace this. And it was very expensive. Our pool will be ready by spring, but we still need to see what the COVID rules will be for this summer. I'm hoping, I'm hoping to open the pool with the regulations that children must be accompanied by an adult so the adult can help enforce social distancing. And.
Yeah, we tried that last year, and none of the adults wanted to come. They wanted to just drop their kids off and have our lifeguard babysit them. But we, we can't do that. So that's it. Everything else is just going to. Wow, read.
I know. Well, I read it fast, but that's why I put them in the minutes so that if people miss something, just that I try not to take up the whole meeting. But I want to let you know what's been going on in the past two weeks. All right. So Eileen, do you have anything you wanted to share with us?
Yeah, a couple of things. They're kind of random. As far as the West Endicott Porch Fest is, I just really don't see that happening for COVID. I mean, it's just really, there's so many people who wanted it. But I just don't think the restrictions are going to be light enough. So that's more than likely not going to help to happen. There, we're celebrating the one hundred, hundred-year arch, the EJ arch with Johnson City. We're going to have some sort of an event, which is nice that we're incorporating JC and Endicott being it is Endicott Johnson. The Shriners and Rotary are going to be involved in whatever, whatever we're putting together. The Rotary is also celebrating their one hundred-year anniversary, too. Hopefully, fingers crossed, everything will go on. I intend to be working with Jason Shaw on the police reform, on the, on police taking on parts of the Town of Union. I think that might be a real boost for the police department. It does come with a lot of money being invested, more cars, more officers. So it's pretty complicated, but I'll keep you in the loop on that. The Binghamton Fund is putting three murals on Washington Avenue. I'm not exactly sure where they're going to be. I can kind of imagine, but not exactly sure. So I won't speak on it. Stefan Whitman, I don't know if you know him. He and his wife Rebecca are from Stiletto's. They do sip and paint over here at the visitor center. Great guy, wonderful artist. He's going to be doing some murals for the Main Street Grant. I'm also in contact with Emily Jablon. We're still going to be looking for her to do the reading chair for Story Garden at the library out of Mosaic. Pretty cool. And, and the fire department's going to be having a press conference to unveil the new truck, which is a really beautiful thing. That's an "oo-oo," as Wyatt would say. That's what he called fire trucks, "oo-oo's." And I'm going to be working on this night out, national night out with the police department. So. So I got a record, so I'm on that. That's it.
Good. We'll keep you busy.
No, yeah, she, she.
COVID is COVID and no COVID.
Keeps me busy. Mm-hmm.
All right. Nick, what would you like to report on tonight?
Well, good evening. Uh, first I would like to give a big shout out to the Fire and Police Department. They had a very busy weekend, two house fires and a vehicle fire. Uh, the house fires were on Lincoln and the vehicle fire was on Adams.
And then it came, it spurred up again, didn't it?
One of the house fires did, yeah.
They were a little concerned it could have been arson, but it was not. They were, I want the whole public to know they were, um, not arson.
Yeah, could we let, could, could we let Nick finish his comments, please?
I'm sorry. I didn't know if you knew that. I saw Paul Higgins this morning and saw, I'm sorry, Nick, go right ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, so first of all, prayers to all of the residents and families affected. I know there are at least two GoFundMe pages online to help the families. Uh, tonight I am introducing a resolution to start a Parks Advisory Commission. Over the last several years, our parks have been a little neglected, um, in part because of COVID, but this trend cannot continue. Now more than ever, our community needs nice, clean, safe parks. On February eighteenth, I attended a lecture on Zero Waste hosted by Dr. Paul Connet. It was educational and enlightening. There were some professors from Binghamton University on the call. It was, it was really a neat thing. So tonight I am proposing that we start a zero waste advisory commission. I do not expect any immediate progress on the subject, but I think it's imperative that we at least start the conversation. We have our next temporary refuse commission meeting on March eleventh. Um, so hopefully we can find a little progress with that as well. The last bullet on the Warner, Dorian, Berlin game ten point plan for Endicott is to restore dignity, decorum, professionalism, honesty, integrity and good judgment to Endicott. With that being said, I am working on a positive image campaign. Cleaning up the perception of Endicott is a key component in taking us to the next level. I think it will help attract new businesses, jobs and increase community pride. Endicott is continuously being portrayed in a negative light on the news, social media, opinion pieces in the paper. We are riddled with negativity and I, I think it's time to change the narrative. Let's promote our home rather than tear it down. Let's inspire our residents and promote the positive aspects because Endicott does have a lot of positive things to consider. This will not be an easy task, but I do believe positivity is contagious. I think we must all work together to achieve this goal. I ask everyone to call if you see something positive in Endicott. Please talk about it, share it with friends and neighbors. Uh, with that being said, in the coming weeks, we will be introducing some legislation and policies to help restore professionalism, integrity and improve transparency, transparency from within the village. Um, and as per our meeting procedure rules, we can add items to the agenda by majority vote of the board. I would like to make two motions. That's, so for everyone.
Go ahead.
First, I would like to make a motion to add a presentation from Delta Engineering tonight after the comment section.
I'll second it.
I, oh, sorry.
Do we need to vote on it or?
To vote on, yeah.
Yeah, we could.
Uh, Christie Connectney?
Sure.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Dornan?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Okay. And I would also like to make a motion to have an email received from Resident Nikki Wales on February twenty seventh, twenty twenty one be entered under communications for filing.
I'll, I'll second that.
Christie Connectney?
Sure.
Christie Burlingame?
Yeah.
Christie Dornan?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Dornan?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Okay. And I would also like to make a motion to have an email received from Resident Nikki Wales on February twenty seventh, twenty twenty one be entered under communications for filing.
I'll, I'll second that.
Christie Connectney?
Sure.
Christie Burlingame?
Yeah.
Christie Dornan?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Dornan?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Okay. And I would also like to make a motion to have an email received from Resident Nikki Wales on February twenty seventh, twenty twenty one be entered under communications for filing.
I'll, I'll second that.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I love your energy. Thank you. Um, Ted, you have something you'd like to report on?
Yes, I've got just a couple of quick comments. One, talking about fires, I just want everybody to know the fire loss on Odell Avenue has been settled by the insurance company that I work with and she's very happy with how the company treated her and she'll be going to, uh, she's going out to get bids to have the, the building torn down, so that'll help the neighborhood. Number two, uh, got a call from Anthony to, uh, start, uh, joining in on the budget hearings with the, the department heads, which I guess we're starting this week or next week. So I'll be working on those with Anthony and, uh, the department heads. The number three, uh, during my discussions with Jason Garner last week, he, uh, mentioned a COVID relief package amount that the village is supposed to get. He made a public today and, uh, I'll let Anthony deal with that. That's his turn, so.
Okay, thank you. That's good to hear about that person on Odell. That, that's really great. That's really great. What number Odell was that?
Three twenty-five.
Thank you. Just look where he's gone, where I, I'm to look at the property and see where it's going to be. Thank you very much. Ted, you have something you'd like to report on?
Yes, uh, this, this, um, thing we just voted on to put a, a special presentation on the agenda for tonight. The agenda that we have on later tonight for the meeting to vote on, we'll add that into the agenda as a permanent thing, as item number seven, special presentations. So when people come in with a project or a presentation or something, we, we can now have a spot to fill them in onto the agenda. The second thing, uh, the second thing that I wanted to bring up, uh, is the ten point plan that Nick and Nick Burlingame, Pat Donner and myself put together. Um, at Endicott Proud last week, I was on the agenda to explain the ten point plan and I think Rocky D. Franziski was on there to talk about his Skyview project and then Linda was on and then I was on, but Linda went straight down through the whole ten point, ten point client, plan. And so as a result, um, they skipped over my spot on the agenda last week. So, so I'll, I'll go through and do it right now. This, um, on February eighth, Pat Donner, myself and Nick Burlingame, we passed a law that prevents incinerators, uh, recycling companies with incinerators coming to Endicott. And, uh, Linda and Eileen Connectney had pushed for this incinerator for a whole year, starting last March. And it took the efforts of hundreds and hundreds of people, literally hundreds of people in Endicott to stop it. And the result of their work was a landslide election, uh, last November, which changed the makeup of the board. And it put a, a stop to the path where we were headed with an incinerator in the middle of town. And this, this was a traumatic course of events for the village, but it took a lot of work and the people that were against the incinerator did finally win. So Nick and Pat and I sat down, we took a look at the whole picture. Even though we won, we, of course, we were against the incinerator also. Um, the winning took a, took on a lot of work, but it also had, in order to stop it, it took on a negative overtone because it was always a process of stay, Sanjiel go home. We don't want Sanjiel. Uh, all the signs on the lawns were negative in, in nature, but that's the only way you could do it. And so that was a whole year of these negative phrases, negative comments. So we took a look at the picture and, uh, decided we wanted to change the, the tone of Endicott, the image of Endicott from a negative, uh, view that we've had for a year to a positive, uh, a positive tone. The incinerator nightmares behind us, we wanted to move forward. We identified in our plan things we wanted that were going to be positive. And number two, proactive, rather than sit around and wait for something to happen and then re, react, we want to be proactive and do things. It sounds like Nick is really going gangbusters here. And also pro-business. So the three of us, uh, that's for the village and also for the three of us. So over the three week period, we, we worked on a ten point plan. We had some help from a few other people from the outside and we wanted to come up with a roadmap of not, this is not a Village of Endicott ten point plan and this is not a Board of Trustees ten point plan. What this is, is a Warner, Doner, Berlin game ten point plan. And we, our goal was not to come up with huge pie in the sky innovative, uh, ideas. Our goal was to show people the things in Endicott that we are for in a positive nature. And because we were somewhat being portrayed by Linda and Eileen as anti-business and, uh, so we wanted to make sure people knew where we stood on these things. So what we did, we did this ten point plan. Uh, it's called Endicott, New York is Open for Business, uh, ten point plan by Ted Warner, Nicholas Burlingame and Patrick Donner. And, uh, it's a pretty short plan, but I will, uh, I won't read it all, but I'll kind of give you a summary of it. Uh, we want to amend the recycling law. In order to stop the incinerator from coming to town, we had to work fast and pass an anti-recycling law. So what happened was when we passed it, on its face, it does stop recyclers from coming to Endicott right now into the industrial district. So we knew that at the beginning. That's, but we had to work fast. We didn't have time to sit down and plan out all the, uh, the proper wording that we would want in there. So now we're working on to put a couple more sentences in the law where safe and, uh, non-incinerator, non-burning type of recycling companies will be allowed in Endicott. So just to make sure that's what we're, we are for that. We want to maintain an open dialogue with here, here on campus, which has not been done for probably ten years or more. Uh, we've already met with, um, uh, the manager over there of the campus and he was kind of surprised that we actually met with him. Uh, but we wanted to meet with him to show that we are interested. When something happens in Endicott or if Endicott's going to succeed, the number one entity in Endicott that needs to be included in that is the here on campus. They've got two million square feet of space over there. There's nothing like that anywhere in Endicott. And so this is a big entity that we want to include in our, um, moving forward. Um, we're completely in support of the Washington Avenue Revitalization Project. It's going to, uh, redo the streetscape of Washington Avenue, uh, three gateways, entries to the Endicott, which is North, uh, North Street and Washington Avenue, uh, Main Street and Washington Avenue and McKinley Avenue and Broad Street. Uh, we're in complete support of Imperium Three Battery Company coming here. Uh, and, uh, we will do everything we can to try to help them in their project. Uh, we support, um, some other projects that are going on. The, uh, there's a develop, a developer or two developer partners that are, um, buying properties on Washington Avenue. The idea is to renovate them, make the avenue look better and of course, probably in the long run, turn around and sell them and make some money. But in the me, in the meantime, we benefit from that. Uh, there's two large plots of land, one out the back door of Wendy's, uh, where that, where the digital sign is and one out the front door of Wendy's where the hotel used to be. And they're both owned by the same developer. Uh, we want to, we are completely in, in favor of helping and working with him to whatever kind of project he's interested in there, in doing there. Uh, and the third one, which is probably the toughest nut of all to crack, uh, is the Kmart Plaza property, uh, due to the pollution and the, the problems there with that. But we do want to try to do something on that. So none of these are new. We didn't look for new things. We weren't trying to bring in NASA to move to Endicott or anything like that. So then we had four other goals, which were quality of life goals. One was, uh, improve the appearance of Endicott and the pride of ownership of it. Uh, one thing I've, I've said for four or five years when I do talk is that when you wake up on a Sunday morning and you want to go for a Sunday drive, it's beautiful day, sunny, sun is out, no wind, you choose maybe WeGo or Skinny Atlas or Cooperstown to drive to. But if you can imagine people in those towns waiting, waking up on a Sunday morning and going for a drive, do you ever think they say, let's go to Endicott? So there's a reason for that and there's, one reason is the appearance and the image that Endicott has, which is one thing we all want to work on. The second, uh, project is, um, uh, collaborate with the local organizations that benefit the community. One is Endicott Proud, one is the Vine Community Gardens and the other one is the Endicott Community Center. Um, and I skipped over one by accident, going back to the pro-business goals. Um, work closely with it and I think he's, I think they're going to give a presentation tonight. Work closely with the, um, the developer who was doing a twenty million dollar project in Endicott. It's not a pie in the sky thing, it's for sure, it's real. This is, they're coming here tonight and they were here last, at the last meeting. Hundred and twenty unit living, uh, living unit project on East Franklin Street, something the Village of Endicott's never seen before. And we wanted to monitor and report on improvements to the Endicott water system, which, uh, there's some projects in the way on that and so we do want to be behind that. So these are all the things that we are for. And the one that might, and the one that Nick already mentioned, and restore dignity, decorum, professionalism, honesty, integrity and good judgment, not only to Endicott, but to the, to these board meetings, um, because they have been, uh, somewhat contentious. And then the third thing, I'm taking a long time here tonight, but third thing, Bob sent us a letter, uh, uh, I don't see the date on here, but just a couple of weeks ago regarding the, uh, these new, since the eight weeks we've been in, in here, Nick and Pat and I have worked, uh, cleaning up this, uh, Endicott's compute, committee, boards and commissions system. And for decades, it's just been fly by night. No one knew there was any laws that, that pertain to that. But there's such a thing as board advisory committees. These are committees set up and Nick set up a couple, is going to set up a couple tonight on parks and different, different things. These are approved by the board. The board approves them so they can meet in board, in, uh, village buildings. They can use a village copying machine, use the village Zoom meetings. Uh, then there's mayor's committees, which is a committee that's set up by the, that are allowed by, to be set up by the mayor. They would meet with the mayor, provide advice, their, their sole purpose is to provide advice to the mayor. Uh, however, they're not approved by the board. Uh, they, they're just set up by the mayor. So they can't meet in the, in any of the village buildings and they can't use any village, uh, any village resources. They can't have village employees come to their meetings and give reports, that type of thing. And then the third type of committees, it's called legislative committees, they're set up by law. We have ten of those committees, uh, either Endicott law or state law tells how those committees run, tells how you make the, how you get the members on there, like the water board, the planning board, the zoning board, the library board, the airport board, there's ten of them. So the, uh, the law, the, the letter that Bob sent us, uh, maybe a couple of weeks ago, I'm going to read, I'm going to summarize what he had in the letter. These board advisory committees that are set up by the board, voted on by the board, approved by the board, they're purely advisory in nature, they have no legal authority, they have no terms of office, the members have no term, they're there for one year or twenty years, there's no quorum requirements and the board trustees may act with or without their advice. Therefore, meetings of the board advisory committees are not subject to the open meetings law. So they're not open to the public unless the board approves otherwise. Uh, their meetings are open only to their own committee members who are appointed and approved by the board unless the board approves otherwise. They are approved and sanctioned by a majority of the board of trustees. They may use village, Endicott buildings and properties for their meetings. They may use other building, uh, village resources for their work, including audio, video, Zoom conferencing, village website, the, with the village Facebook site. They may call on village employees to come and, uh, give reports to their meetings and attend their meetings, provide advice. and if you're going to comply with it as far as Washington Avenue Revitalization Committee.
Did you want me to answer that, Ted, or do you have more you'd like to say first?
No, I'm asking that as a question.
Oh, okay. Well, I still have my advisory Washington Avenue Committee. It's only people, like mostly from Endicott Proud, and we don't meet in the board room. We meet in a private spot that I pay for, as a matter of fact. So you won't have to worry about us. I won't, I don't use any village money, I never have. I don't mind meeting without going next door and asking the boss anyway.
Okay.
So I'm going to have, I'm going to still meet my own, because we've gotten so far that I'm going to keep going with it. But there's no village employees, there's no money, and there's no village buildings. So I'm complying with all the rules, even though the Attorney General has sent me a letter, I'm still going along with all the rules, because I want to keep everything as calm and orderly as I can. So I will be still meeting on my own, and when we have ideas, I'll be bringing them to the board to share them.
Yeah, that's, and I think that's great, Linda. And I would, I was just going to ask that you maybe even have a secretary type, I mean, write down the ideas that come up, because the more people that come up with ideas, the better. And if you could bring all of those ideas to that committee, and you're on the, you're on the what? I don't know whether, you're on the big committee too.
We've been meeting for so long that I've got, I've gotten quite far ahead, so, so, but I'll be bringing those, when, when we're ready, I'll be bringing in, that's a very good idea, because we are meeting. Like I say, we're not meeting here, and to tell you the truth, it's kind of nice, because it's all people bringing their ideas, and we have all of Bergman's ideas, I have all the papers that I've had for two years to look at, and I especially love the Bergman book, and you've got the Bergman book too, you must love it as much as I do.
Yeah, I think Bergman has, I think Bergman does have some good ideas in there. But yeah, I would really encourage you to bring every single idea that your group has to the, to the other committee, because the more ideas we have, the more, the more things we can choose from.
Yep, we have, we have some very good ideas. Our biggest problem right now, Ted, and I'm going to share this with you so that you can share it with your committee, is a lot of people want, and you kind of have the foot traffic, so we really need to give that some thought, because maybe that's not a great idea. But I guess we don't need to talk about that now, but I just want to mention that so you can keep that in mind and talk to other people about that.
Okay. And you'll be glad to know that I don't have anything else to talk about.
Okay, very good. Bob, do you have anything you'd like to talk about today?
Am I next on agenda here?
We didn't forget you, Bob.
Okay, only, only a couple of things, I'll be real quick. There's a charter communicate, communicated with us, there's, we have a franchise agreement with Charter Communications, which allows them to run their lines in our streets, we charge them a franchise fee. We've got to renegotiate and re-up that contract, so I'll be working on that. And there will be, have to be a public hearing in front of the board and a resolution for the board. So I expect that to come up probably around April, May timeframe for board action, but I'll be in touch with you on that. We did get a letter on Friday, or I got a letter from Griffiths Engineering. This is for the Skyview project, and they would, they're proposing to provide engineering services for the village to help us review that project. It just came in on Friday, so it didn't quite make the agenda, but if the board wants to act on that, you can add it to the agenda if you'd like. And that's all I've got.
Anthony, do you have anything you'd like to report on?
Just a couple of things, I'll be good too. Bob, if you need the old contract for that, the communications I had, you got an email today from county, talking about Taylor, Taylor Garbage Recycling Facility. Said that at least another three to four weeks out before their openings, so the county's, you know, going to keep, continue what we've been doing. And we've been paying, the last report, anywhere between 185 a ton to 220 a ton that we're paying to remove the recycling right now. So hopefully with the, you know, new facility being open. Just been working on a lot of different things. I mean, we got the infill project on the avenue is out, the air fee is out for that, proposals are due back April 8th, I believe. So we got that going on. Couple of grants, grant projects we're working on now, I got a couple that we're going to be closing out, so we'll be getting a reimbursement for that. Some other projects, like the New York Rising project, we got the last invoices in for that, so working through the closeout process for that, which is quite detailed, so hopefully that'll be done pretty soon. I met with a couple of developers over the last few weeks, had some, just a general discussion about the projects or ideas for the village. Hopefully, hopefully that, something will happen with that in the near future. We did get an email from the county emergency services office about the snowstorm from December, that there will not be a emergency declaration from the state on that, so, so as of now, all the monies that were spent from the communities will not be reimbursed. So I had a, I had a conversation with a representative of Senator's office today, and just let him know what was going on, that we just got that email, so if there's anything that anyone can do to help all these communities that spent a good deal on dealing with that snow.
Unbelievable.
You know, be, be helpful for all of us. So we're kind of all in the same, have the same issue going on with that. You mentioned the fire truck, the press conference on the new fire truck. I know they're looking at March 8th at 1:00 PM. I think the media service is going to do a final approval on that, and then send it off for everyone, whoever can attend. But I know that's the date and time that they're looking at.
March 8th at?
Yeah, March 8th at 1:00 PM. The last thing I had is, Ted mentioned, we're going to start the budget process, it's coming up here pretty soon. So what we'll do is, you know, meet with the department heads individually, get the restinists together, put them, you know, in our, in our spreadsheet for the budget, and then we'll have to come in front of the board, like we always do. So each department head will come, you know, one-on-one in front of the board, make their presentation for their initial budget, and then we kind of move on from there.
Are we setting aside separate times?
Yeah, so we're looking at probably, I'll meet with the department heads starting this week, beginning the next week, so either the end of next week, or the, sometime the following week, we'll have to start bringing them in.
Okay.
And, but I'll send out an email to try to coordinate schedules to see what works best for everyone, so. When we get to that point, we kind of have, it's, I don't know, day, you know, daytime, you know, we can, we can do a couple at a time, you know, like two, like two departments at a time, so we'll do, one will come in for an hour, another one will come in for an hour. But we'll have to work on that as far as the schedule goes.
Yeah, that's going to be tough.
Yeah.
For Nick and Pat, and legitimately for me, too.
Okay, well, we'll send out some, like a little questionnaire and see what works best for everyone. And then as Ted mentioned, I did see in the, in the news there about the stimulus, I guess, that's coming to the, you know, municipalities. So I, we're slated for 2.8 million is what I saw, and I think that's what was released in the news. So there's, you know, we'll have to talk about that, there's obviously some options we have. Just talking about Washington Avenue, I know that's kind of on everybody's mind. Our share of Washington Avenue projects are about 2.6, a little over 2.6 million. So this could, you know, if we decide to go that route, this stimulus could prevent us from having to borrow a, a large sum of money and pay it back over 10 years.
Do you guys see the smile on his face? And a possible, a possible weight off his shoulders when he's just saying it?
Get too far ahead of ourselves, you know, until that money's in the bank, we'll, we'll celebrate that, I guess. But we'll, we'll look at different options, what we can do with that. But I did, you know, one, and it was funny, I just had a webinar too, and they were talking about budget stuff, and, you know, you have your recurring revenues, recurring expenses, those should match up, but so, so should your one-time revenues and your one-time expenses. So this could be in that category, or, you know, this one-time revenue will mesh it up to certain one-time expenses, and, you know, save, save on some of these maybe debt issues or, or borrowing that we'll have to do in the future, so. We'll, we'll talk more about that, I'm guessing, over the next few weeks here.
Once we really get it.
Yeah. Yeah. But it's good that, that's come through, we do have some options for it.
That's it. Okay. And for those of you who don't notice, poor Anthony's got more gray hair since he got that email yesterday. We got it, we got it Friday, didn't we?
Yeah.
We got it Friday. I, I, I. Put the emergency phone? Taking it into his office. The emergency phone?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was a shocker. We had no idea that was coming.
Wow.
I got, I, I hesitated taking it into him, but luckily he was sitting down.
That's tough, it's a lot of work. All the department heads, you know, myself, put all this, put it all together on worksheets, and you have to document everyone's hours, what hours they were using, what equipment. You know, we actually, we called then private contractors to help us out.
I was there, I saw it happening, that was crazy.
So we, we put in about 100,000, just for Village of Endicott. And the email said, which you'll have to find out more about, it said that to declare statewide disaster, you had to have 30 million of claims to be submitted, and I know about 16, they said, were submitted, so, so we're a little short on that, but I think the issue was, it was just, the storm was just concentrated on a small area, it wasn't really statewide. So if it's a statewide, statewide requirement, you know, but you, you know, other cities like Syracuse, Buffalo, like the.
Well, I'm sure the other municipalities are equally.
You know, like we did, so.
Just discouraged by that, for sure. And we did call it, we did, we did call it a state of emergency, we did file the papers with the state, that it was a state of emergency. And we've, they told us if you file those papers, you're covered. Well, obviously, that's not accurate.
Yeah, so.
We'll come back bigger, better, stronger.
You know, we let the, you know, some individuals know, and hopefully, maybe there's something that can come in the future from that, but we'll, we'll see.
I'd say I'd call the governor, but I think he's got his hands full. He hasn't done much for us recently.
Any recourse with our Assembly?
Right.
In our state senate?
No, I talked to the Senator's office today, actually, I got an email from one of the representatives in the Senator's office over the weekend about something else. So I called him back, just to touch base on that. And I mentioned to him that, I don't know if they heard about it, but according to me, he didn't hear the news yet, so. So I told him what happened, I said, you know, all of us are in the same, have the same issue, you know, in the central cities here at least, of money that was spent, with the hope that it would come back through a fee of reimbursement. But we got that news, so, so they're aware of it, and told them that anything, or they give from us, or I.
Yeah. Did you reach out to Donna? Make sure you reach out to Gloria at Donna's office, too.
Yeah, okay.
And because if she can do anything, she will, I'm sure.
Yep.
Good, thank you, Anthony. Well, now I believe we want to hear from Delta, is that, is that the agreement? So Anthony, if you can, if you can unmute them, and so that they can.
Okay.
Can you turn on the screen so I can see?
Sure. So, see if I can, I can't see anymore. I see Dan, Rocky, Anthony, who Sarah's iPad is Sarah Campbell.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us and adding us to the agenda. My name is Dan Felzinski, I'm with Delta Engineers Architects and Lands of Errors. I'm here with Rocky Di Francesco, his business partner George, Sarah Campbell, his attorney, and my boss, Anthony Penecha. And we recently provided property tax information and financials, financial application to under the, for the Altria F U Heights Senior Housing Project. And really, the point, we don't really have so much of a discussion, or sorry, a presentation, but we're here for an open discussion on, on what was provided and the next steps forward. And Rocky, you might be able to speak to the financials and the information provided in the documentation that was sent to the village earlier. If you got the packet available, Anthony, I can walk the board through that too, if you want to go through step by step the information that's been provided.
Yeah, everyone has it. Just want to start where you are, where you are, sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't hear of that.
Well, what I'd like to do tonight is, I had a friend of mine ask me, what exactly is deviated pilot? And I think a lot of people that are on Zoom tonight probably are asking themselves, what exactly is a deviated pilot, and how does it help the development? Well, doing a project of $20 million actually exceeds the limit for a financier like Vision Credit Union financed the first part of a Skyview by $5 million. So they would also have to get another lending institution involved to do a project of this size. The thing with a deviated pilot that helps a developer make a deal work is, until this building gets up and gets stabilized, you can't automatically be hit with hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes. It doesn't work, it can't work, and no developer can absorb from day one, putting the stall in, racking up a tax bill like this. But the reason that I think people need to understand, if the property stayed as it has been the last 20 years that the Grasso family has owned it, they would have collected 100, the village and the county would have collected $155,000 over the 20 years total tax. If this project was to get built, the, the county and the village and the schools will And to break it down a little further, in year five, if the property stays as it is right now, status quo, the village and the county will collect $5,832 in taxes. Under the deviated pilot, the five-year tax bill for just the one year, the fifth year, will be $305,644. At the end of 10 years, in the 10 tax bill status quo, would be $6,439. Under the deviated pilot, the 10th year tax bill, we're talking one year, is $567,539. In the 15th year, status quo, if the property stays like it is today, will be $7,110. In the 15th year, if the deviated pilot is approved and the project gets built, the tax bill for that year alone, $880,640. In the 20th year, status quo, property stays the same as it is today and has been for the last 20 years, the tax revenue collected, it's $7,850. Under the deviated pilot, my tax bill in the 20th year, for one year, my taxes will be $1,252 and change, so over a quarter of a million dollars for one year. You have to look at these deviated pilots for projects like this, like an annuity. Like I said, the Grasso family owned this land for 20 years, it sat vacant, and the taxes on that property run around $5,000 a year. So in 20 years, that property, if that property stays as it is today, the tax bill in over 20 years total is $155,422. And under this deviated pilot, if this project gets built, it's $16,388,265. it's sixteen million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's almost sixteen and a half million dollars as opposed to a hundred and fifty-five thousand. I, I just think it takes rocket science to understand what is in the best interest of the community along with who is going to live there. People with spendable income, people that are not out on the street corners selling drugs or breaking laws. I'm sure that there are no police calls up at Skyview Heights. And I think that that demographic is exactly what you need to retain in the Village of Endicott. And like I talked, um, um, to, uh, the group Endicott Proud, I told them that I've been a developer for forty years and you need people with spendable income to live in the municipality where you're doing commercial development and encourage new development to come into your area. Uh, there has to be a balance there with residential supporting the commercial development. And if anybody else has any questions regarding the pilot, if I could answer it, uh, I'd be, uh, uh, more than amiable to answer anybody's question when it comes to a deviated pilot and what the purpose of that is. But like I said, I don't think it takes rocket science to figure out what's better. A bird in the hand or two in the bush. If nothing gets filled on that site, and I, I really was not blowing smoke when I said, a very dear friend of mine who's a broker and lives in Endicott, had a buyer for that piece of property, uh, I was ready to sell it for a cell phone tower i- if Sun's deal was allowed.
Rocky, I had a question. Um, as the land is now, over the next twenty years, you would, you'd be paying about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. If you do the project, you're going to pay sixteen million in taxes. Are you really, really sure you want to do your project?
Yeah, I am convinced, and I gotta tell you.
That's just, that's just a joke.
The numbers, the numbers work, and more importantly, I'm in my, um, I believe fifth or sixth year of the existing Skyview Heights. If they had left that property as it stood over twenty years, they would have collected a hundred and ten thousand dollars. My tax bill this year, um, I can't tell you the exact dollar amount because I don't have it in front of me, but just this year alone, my taxes were very close to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And they wouldn't have collected that much in twenty years, and how much the bill is. And more importantly, I own a lot of developments and I've been doing this a long time. Go check with the county and ask if any of my properties have ever been in tax foreclosure. I pay my taxes. Hey, oh, on a, in a timely manner. And I think that that's important.
Rocky, I think this year, twenty twenty-one is a hundred and eighty thousand for that, uh, your current Skyview Heights project.
Yeah. So in twenty years, they would have collected a hundred and ten thousand. I'm in my fifth year and I'm already in a hundred and eighty thousand for one year.
Hey Rocky, this is me. I just want to add one more thing. The trustees and the mayor, what you see is the proposed pilot. The final pilot has to be worked out between the village and the town union. But, uh, tech numbers will be worked out with Cook and Anthony Bates. But the proposed pilot you're looking at is kind of ballpark numbers till everybody agrees on the final numbers.
Yeah, and with the final numbers, the one concern I have, I have a three-year stabilization period to get it built and to get it ready to move into. In the fourth year, those taxes jump up. Uh, I don't have the pilot in front of me, but it's somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars. That's a pretty hefty jump, uh, trying to get a building built and ready to occupy. I would just see that number, uh, massage a little bit and put up. But the bottom line is this, in the course of the deviated pilot, the grand total the village will collect will be almost sixteen and a half million dollars.
Do you have a definite or a projected date of when you would actually break ground up there?
Yeah, I, I made it into some site work this year, but I'm, I'm shooting for next year is, uh, my target date to break ground.
Hey Rocky.
Yeah.
I have a question. Um, will your company be running this facility? Or will you hire a company to run it for you? What is the plan for that?
I'm glad that you brought that up. In the last go-round of Skyview Heights, uh, Phase One, those were, um, uh, modular homes that were brought in. And there was, uh, a lot of controversy over the fact that they weren't built locally. Because I'm proposing to build a four-story building, it will be built onsite, uh, by, uh, local contractors. And you're probably gonna go, and I need to talk to Anthony more about that. I'd like to see it with parking underneath and, uh, pre-engineered steel building and masonry, so it's not combustible. It will be a sprinkled building, uh, for fire. And Pat, um, uh, Dornar mentioned to me about, uh, having a conversation and, uh, it's on the forefront of my mind because I have already thought about it. The, the building will be sprinkled and the portico out front, if you're ever driving over in Bestall, drive into the dialysis center across from Bestall, they have a huge portico where the ambulances pull up. That portico, I believe it's forty-five foot tall. It's all lit with LED lighting so that emergency vehicles, including fire trucks, can pull right onto the front door of that building and get under that portico as well as sprinkling the entire building. And the reason they want to go with masonry is I want solid concrete stairwells going down, uh, each end of the building. In the event that there was ever a reason to vacate the building, you could get people out of there expeditiously.
Hey Rocky, I have one question on the pilot. It's, uh, I'm sure it'll come up whenever one would use it. Uh, but I just wanted to get, uh, have an answer from you on it. Is the, because I was here when he did the, uh, the Skyview Heights, the first, the first part there. So I know the abatement percentage starts off at a different percentage than the old one compared to the new one. Is that just how the financials work out for the, the new project here?
Well, no. It's, it started out the same way. If the current tax stays through construction and the current tax on the first phase of Skyview was higher because it already had a two-family duplex built on the property that was about seventy-five percent completed. So the assessment was much higher than that they had planned where this proposed Altura, uh, four-story building is going to be. And that's why, uh, the tax in the beginning was higher because there was already a new duplex built by, uh, the Matisi and Roma uh, that I inherited with that property. And if you remember back then, I also bought some, a horrible ice store on the corner of Sky Island, the old Signorelli property. They had some rentals there, but it was their homestead. I bought that property and incorporated it in. And I also bought a piece from Carlo Cervoni that went along Sky Island Drive so that I squared that corner right off. So I was also paying the taxes on, the current taxes on the Signorelli property. And that's why I started out at a higher tax rate. I've, I've also been working with Anthony on some of the amenities at Skyview. Um, uh, the indoor-outdoor pool, I think is a big plus. We also want to put in two Jacuzzis and a walkway down to secluded area, uh, up near the portico where people can sit around, um, a fire pit and, uh, sit up there on a hill and get outside and get some fresh air in the evening and maybe, uh, plan some social events. Uh, I would like to see an association set up where, uh, they could orchestrate, um, road trips or, or shopping trips, whatever they'd like to do in their community room there.
I had a question for Anthony Panichia. Um, you said this will, will get a final, uh, printout of the product projected dollars, um, will that, like, how big of a change would that be, do you think, from what we've got here?
It'd be a very minor change, uh, if any, but this is the first time we're proposing it to you. So like your review and input and between Anthony Bates and, uh, Joe Cook, you will come up with the final numbers and those final numbers are your board. But I would say, uh, out of the sixteen million, two hundred and fifty thousand, it might be sixteen million, three hundred thousand or sixteen million, two hundred thousand. Not going to change that significantly.
Are you proposing kind of a timeline on all of this?
Uh, we wanted to get it in front of you because, um, the way we understand it, it, the town and the village have come up with the deviated pilot. It had to come before your board to be voted on, and Rocky's hoping it would be voted on in April. Then we have to go present it to the, uh, agency, which is the Broom County IDA, for their approval, and we'd like to get it on their May agenda. And I think Rocky wanted to get the pilot placed along with all financing prior to him releasing us to, uh, find, to start the design or go to final design. So he wanted to make sure all his I's were dotted and T's were crossed before we, uh, spend a lot of money on the engineering and architecture of this building. Does that answer your question, Ted?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I think if you guys can gather your questions and sit with Joe Cook, we'd like to have a formal approval in the April meeting and we will schedule a meeting with the IDA.
Yeah, maybe we can even put it on the agenda for the next meeting and for discussion. I don't know, would, would this be at the executive session, Anthony, or would it be during the board meeting?
Where the discussion could be at a, at a board meeting.
Can I just make a comment? Uh, to Rocky too, I'm, uh, I'm looking at year twenty-two and a half and the village proportion of the taxes is almost five hundred thousand dollars. You're almost, from what I think I saw with the year on campus taxes for the village, uh, you're going to be catching them pretty quick. I thought they were paying like seven hundred and eighty thousand in village taxes. The entire campus, you're looking at four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. This is such a no-brainer. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, I'm glad that you mentioned that, uh, Pat. Cause that's two million square feet. I'm building a hundred and sixty-five, a, a hundred and sixty thousand square foot as opposed to two million. And my taxes are going to ramp up real quick where my taxes exceed here on campus.
So what do we need to do to expedite this? We gotta drop on the, uh?
I, I don't think we need you to expedite it. I think what we'd like you to do is take your time to understand it, meet with Joe Cook, and let's get on the agenda for the, for April. After we get an approval, we'll get on the, if we know the approval, uh, would be, or it would be voted on in April, we'll set up a meeting with the agency to be on their agenda in April as well. And then we would move forward.
Anthony, will you be providing a copy of the actual agreement itself?
The agreement of the pilot?
Yeah, the, the actual pilot agreement, or is that something that the IDA produces?
Well, the, the IDA will prepare that. Uh, right now, what you have in front of you is prepared by Rocky's accountant and a tax advisor. And I think the actual language will be provided by the IDA after. But we can work that out over the next several weeks between the town, the village, and the IDA to get you the appropriate language.
Okay.
If you have no other questions, I think we, uh, behalf of Sarah, myself, Dan, Rocky, and George, we thank you for the opportunity to present tonight.
Yeah, I did, I did have one other, Anthony, either for you or Rocky, was, uh, what areas or what, uh, items would, um, to do this project, what would the village have to invest? Or what types of things would you need from the village? Or, uh, like water, sewer types of things? Is that?
I, I think it's, to answer that right now, Ted, I think what we have to do is we have to do our analysis to determine, you know, how much sewer, how much water usage there'll be, what electric usage. I think we'd work with your, your, uh, departments to determine how best to meet those needs.
You know, Ted, I did want to say something about that. As you spoke, I'm thinking about the water, the electric, um, uh, the streetlights, uh, the fire hydrants, all of that in Skyview. I had to work with municipal electric department in Endicott. And I gotta tell you, you can talk to anybody that works there. I tried to accommodate that every way, shape, and form that I could. And vice versa. I think they all did an outstanding job laying out, uh, I think they all did an outstanding job laying out, uh, exactly what my vision was up on that hill, getting the power up there without unsightly telephone poles all over the place. They were terrific to deal with, and, uh, up above there, all that, uh, underground utilities, um, is a very costly item. And I didn't ask the village in many other areas during a development of this size, usually the municipality will kick in some bucks toward that. I never asked the village for anything, and at my own cost and expense, I ran a copper eight-inch water main all the way up that mountain 'cause the people that lived in the existing houses on Gokes and Overton had no water pressure, and now they all have water pressure. The only thing that I asked the village to do was to put in some new flat top and curbings and possibly some new sidewalks. And the approach to Skyview is you come down Gokes Street and come down Overton Street 'cause both of those roads were needed for repair, plus they dug up all those, uh, in front of all those apartments to hook them up to that new water line. So, I'm hoping this year that those roads are all repaved and new curbs are put in 'cause quite honestly, um, those roads were in bad shape from the truck traffic from Matisse and the lumber trucks that they brought up on that hill. Those roads were in deplorable shape the day I bought that property. So, there, I'm, I'm really looking for the village to, uh, take care of that. I think that, um, I brought the water up the hill and let all those people hook up to that water main. I think it's important, uh, to, uh, clean up those roads up there after digging them up in front of every house. And I also took care of the drainage problem 'cause when I bought that property, Franklin Street was flooding and a sheet of ice at my own cost and expense. And there hasn't been a problem with water over there in the seven years I've been working on that site.
Hey, Rocky?
Yeah.
Uh, when can we talk about, uh, we've had some off-the-record discussions about the connector between the governor's lanes. Do you still have any interest in looking at that?
Well, if you look at, if you look at the, an aerial view, and I know that Anthony has it, he has aerial views of everything. An aerial view of this site, this proposed site to build Altura on, that existing piece of fifty-some acres that's owned by Carlo Servoni are continuing to release. So, if this development does well, what I'd like to see is a co-venture. I would, I would almost like to see, like, um, amenities brought up there like, uh, a walk-in where seniors could literally walk in pretty, so we can see a nurse practitioner for any aches or pains or colds. I'd like to see something like that. And also, in conjunction, and it's been the success of Hilltop, it, a lot of people feel if I get a place in Hilltop and I get sick, they'll move me to assisted living, or they'll move me to skilled nursing. They did the same, they do the same thing at Elizabeth Church Manor. I would like to possibly see something, uh, a co-venture with somebody that operates assisted living facilities or nursing homes to build a brand-new facility. I know that there's a nursing home up on the north side, uh, absolute, um, but it's, uh, it's a very old facility. I'd like to see something new at night for our community and the people that live there. Uh, so, I think that that fifty acres being contingent is, uh, a big plus and I have had conversations with Carlo about the possibility of buying that fifty acres.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Thank you, guys. We really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, now we'd like to call for a public hearing on March fifteenth to talk about our police reform and the reinvention collaboration draft plan. May I have a moment to set up that public hearing?
I'll make a motion to call for a public hearing on March fifteenth regarding the police reform and reinvention collaborative draft plan.
I'll second that.
Motion second, the roll call, Christie connecting?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Dorner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
And that, that'll be six P.M.?
Yes, sir, that will be six P.M. Thank you. Yes, six P.M. Now, for the critical minutes, Chuck C. Burlingame has asked to hold it over, so we are going to hold for those both votes, the two-one and the two-fifteen. A minute for approval. We'll hold them over till next meeting. For communications for filing. I'd like a motion to accept both A to C letters for communications for filing.
I'll make a motion to accept the communications for filing, A through C.
Oh, that.
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Dorner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Very good. Now, we have, um, communications for action. Number A is the consultant contract for snow removal for the airport.
I make a motion to accept the consultant contract for snow removal at the airport. Good job, Gerard.
I'll second it.
Good job.
Call, Christie connecting?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Dorner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we have a police department promotion. There's no paperwork to go with this, but it's for Detective James Rossi promoted to sergeant with a salary of seventy-eight thousand, one oh five five. Patrolman Officer John Dunham promoted to sergeant with a s- salary of seventy-eight thousand, one oh five thirty-five.
I'll make a motion to accept that. Police promotions and congratulations, officers. Thank you.
Can we just do them individually? Have two different motions?
Sure, sure. I make a motion for Detective Rossi for a promotion.
To, to sergeant, right?
Right.
The salary listed, okay. Hold second.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that based on any of the other paperwork we've received, or is it, is this just good enough, this wording, Bob? I mean, is there a, with a contract or whatever?
No, there, there's no contract, uh, so it would just be in accordance with the wording of this motion.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion. Do you have to do a roll call?
Roll call, yeah. Christie connecting?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yeah.
Christie Dorner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion for Patrol Officer John Dunham to be promoted to sergeant.
I'll second it.
The roll call, Christie connecting?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just to clarify, with a salary of seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and five dollars, thirty-five cents, yes.
Uh, Christie Dorner?
Yes.
And Christie Warner?
Yes.
Now, number C is a request to, to reject the first bill that Phil Grayson gave us.
I'll make a motion to reject the Phil Grayson bid for a primary clarifier component.
I'll second that.
And roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Christie Dorner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
And then I make a motion to request Phil to rebid the primary clarifier component.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Roll call, Christie connecting?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yeah.
Christie Dorner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Now, Bob brought us this, uh, Griffith Engineering. We want to take a vote on that today since we have the paperwork in front of us.
Is it on the agenda?
Uh, no, but Bob brought it to the betterment side, and I asked him, you think he'd like it on the agenda?
Yeah.
'Cause this is gonna help speed along Rocky's project, so I thought perhaps you wouldn't mind.
Be spontaneous?
Just asking.
Well, I'll make a motion to add, uh, this proposal from Griffith Engineering to our agenda tonight.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Dorner? Christie Warner?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion for it?
I'll make a motion to accept the Griffith proposal for the Altara Sky Heights project.
I'll second it.
Roll call, Christie connecting?
Mm-hmm.
Christie Dorner?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes. I'll make a motion to pass the bills.
Oh, darn! Such a killjoy!
I've never done it. I wanted to try it.
Very good, very good. Well, I mean, would you like to second it?
Sure, I'll second it, party pooper.
Okay. That's okay. That's funny, that's, that's funny.
Christie connecting?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Dorner?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Very good. We got our bill of pay. Excellent. Now, for the first hearing with visitors, uh, just remember to speak respectfully, uh, follow our rules with the corners, and you have three minutes to speak, and I'm going to have to end. Thank you, Alan.
Okay, so if you'd like to speak and go down Zoom, you can go down to the reaction tab and raise your hand and, um, hit you, and I also wanna say I got a great tip this week that if you're on the phone, you hit star nine. It'll, your, uh, raising hand feature will work if you're on the phone, so.
Cool.
And, um...
So, Anthony won't have to find you?
Yes, I don't have to go through each phone anymore, so.
That's good.
Thank you, um, Nick sent me the, uh, email and that, so.
And thanks, Ellen Taberry.
Yes. But I appreciate that. That helps, that helps me a lot. Okay, so if anyone would like to speak, uh, like I said, raise, you can either raise your hand feature on Zoom or star nine if you're on the phone. Christie, anyone like to speak?
Very handy.
Six oh seven, four two seven, one zero zero two. Does she need to unmute herself somehow? Or she's unmuted right now.
Donna? Are you, Anthony, are you calling me? It's Donna.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw your handle.
Better than calling your car.
I was wondering if anybody knows about the parking meter poles in front of the Union Post Office and by Family Dollar Store in Union? The meters are off the poles and the poles are still up. What's going on there? Hmm.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think we know.
Does the mayor know anything or anybody?
No, Donna, but I'm writing it down. I'll talk to the parking attendant in the morning on that. He's telling us.
I think that's been done recently. I don't know why.
Well, it's been a couple of months, but maybe, you know, they don't need to put money in meters 'cause there's not much to do there, but the poles are still up.
Are they down anywhere else, uh, Donna?
I, I don't know. I haven't been around on some of the other streets. I can make a patrol and let one know.
Sure, that was pretty good. Yeah, I haven't paid to park there in a long, long time. I don't think they've been there for a long time, but I'm going to ask because that's a curious question, and I'll find out.
Yeah, if they're not gonna have me, you know, meters there, then maybe they should take the poles down just for safety.
It's very bad. So you don't get impaled.
Yeah, and they look terrible, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my hand, Heather's iPhone. Oh, there.
Hi. Um, can somebody question about the recycling laws in Endicott? Like, the, the household recycling things in terms of how it applies to rental? Like, are, are rental properties required to recycle like we are? Or, you know, if it's a private residence, you have to put your recycling out? I'm just wondering because I live by a property that never recycles. They barely take their garbage to the dumpster. I have called code enforcement probably four times since. Just, I, I guess I'm a little, I'm frustrated with it. I'm wondering what the procedure is. Like, I'm calling code enforcement all of the time to get that property taken care of. It is an eyesore, and I wish that other guy was still on the line. Maybe he'd wanna buy, fix it up, something with it, because whoever owns it doesn't take very good care of it.
Well, tenants are supposed to recycle. I don't really have any other information, but tenants are just like everyone else. Everyone should recycle. It's a responsible thing to do.
Well, I'm gonna say that I've owned this property for nineteen years. Seen a yellow bin outside of that property. Never once. They don't shovel, they don't hoe, they, nothing.
Heather, can you give us the address, please?
Three oh one Oak Hill Avenue.
Uh, thank you.
Oak Hill.
It's, it's...
We'll look into that with the code department.
Yeah, because we can provide recycling bins.
Well, that's my other concern, though, is it's really windy tonight. I missed part of this meeting 'cause I follow my recycling route. They don't even take their garbage to the dumpster. Is there some other way to recycle, like some sort of closed container? Otherwise, I'm now picking their garbage and their recycling up out of my yard every day. I guess maybe it starts with better proper management is my, is what I'm asking about.
We'll look into that, Heather.
Okay. Sorry, thanks.
You're counting? Are you sure?
Is somebody, uh, taking that on as a project to look into that and get back to her?
Well, we're taking it on a project, but I didn't get her number to take...
So, so she would know who to call or talk to if she doesn't hear anything?
Heather, I'm sure that you can call the mayor's office because your iPhone number doesn't come up.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Where is it?
Okay, um, I have, uh, six oh seven, seven six five, zero nine, one...
Are you warm enough, Pat? Hello?
Yes. Yes, you're on.
Oh, hi, um, this is Nikki Wales calling. How are you?
Good.
Um, I live at five oh five South Street, right here in the village of Endicott, and I would like to talk about my trees. So, as you're aware, every healthy tree on South Street was re...
So, as you're aware, every healthy tree on South Street was recently removed. The decision to remove these trees was reached by Ms. Jackson without village board, without residents of South Street, without experts, and without any type of investigation whatsoever. This was Ms. Jackson admittedly acting on her own. I have several emails stating that she acted on her own. Proper protocol would have been to notify the village board, have a meeting that included South Street residents, hear everyone's opinion, call on experts like urban foresters, cooperative extension, and arborists, then and only then make an informed decision. The duties of a village mayor are to lead board meetings, balance budgets, and to vote as a council member. Village mayor is supposed to act as a representative for the people. A village mayor cannot just listen to one complaint and immediately act while ignoring others. I have twenty-five people on South Street that wanted these trees to stay. Two South Street residents wanted the trees in front of their houses gone. There was overwhelming support for these trees to stay, yet Ms. Jackson had them removed. Perhaps, as she claims, there was a complaint about the South Street trees, but without approaching any experts with knowledge of tree roots whatsoever, she came to her own abrupt decision to remove all the trees on South Street, not just problem ones. Again, she did not discuss anything with board members or residents. I'm not an attorney, but it seems Ms. Jackson has far overreached her authority. I know for a fact that many people, including myself, had contacted the mayor's office before the trees were removed. Our pleas not only fell on deaf ears, but were met with irrational excuses, one after another. Everything I'm saying to you today has been said directly to Ms. Jackson. She didn't care. She told me several times, this was her decision alone. Through speaking with so many different knowledgeable and informative people, such as urban foresters, trustees, and board members from this village and surrounding areas, not one person agrees with how this dangerous decision was made. One man best said, "It's like going to the doctor with a sore arm and the doctor responding with amputation. No x-ray, no questions, just cut it off." I really hope everyone on the board will investigate this. I would love to get a list of complaints because I have twenty-five people who wanted these trees to stay. And I want new trees planted for everyone on South Street who would like one. Because I don't want this ever happening in our village again. It's reckless and careless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Nikki, I, I like the comment. My name, this is Ted Warner, um. Uh, I think we've all re- received several of your letters and the petitions and everything, and Nick, Nick tonight, uh, put your letter, your recent letter into the record of the tonight's board meetings. And I filed a complaint, um, that if you, if the, if you and people on the, on South Street could come up with maybe or have some discussions, uh, there's two issues. There's one of tearing the trees down, and there's another issue of planting new trees. Well, planting new trees is not an excuse and doesn't stop anyone blaming someone for tearing them down. So, the new trees is great. We all support that, I think. We're, we're going to get behind that, but that doesn't help you on South Street. Uh, actually, um, well, it'll help you because you can get some new trees, but what, what it did was it made the street look less inviting, and it probably hurt your property values. And I filed a complaint, or I brought up a complaint during our, during our work session tonight that, um, the village board knew nothing about this until you, I think until your first letter came in. And if you and some of the people on South Street can come up with some wording, I would like to propose a motion, uh, that, to make sure this doesn't happen again. But we have to come up with some kind of, uh, way to figure this out. One, something like this. On any street in Endicott, or any five-block section of any street, if any more than three trees, seven trees, whatever, some number are going to be torn down in the period, in a rolling twelve-month period, then it has to go to the board. The board would have to decide. No one person should be able to decide that again in the village. And it's, that's not going to help you, but planting new trees will help you. I think, uh, when we get that program going, Linda's working on that program. She's got some kind of a grant she's working on. But South Street should be definitely first in line, uh, for as many trees as they want uh, out of this, uh, new tree planting program. So maybe if you have some people that want to come up with some kind of wording similar to what I had, or maybe even, uh, something else that you can think of, because there's no reason this should ever happen again in Endicott. We had no, we didn't know about it. The board neighbor was told, and there, as far as I know, there is absolutely zero documentation, zero proof of what they say is the reason why they were torn down. And that's fine, Ed.
Yeah. Nikki, I'm sorry that this happened. We certainly need a procedure in place to prevent this from happening again. However, I do want to remind everyone on the call that we have to be very careful on personal attacks. This is not the place for it. Um, we did receive your letter and thank you. But for all the other callers, please, um, try not to single out a board member.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. I appreciate that.
Well, the tax is one thing, but stating what, actual facts of what happened in history, there's no problem with that.
Hmm. I don't know.
The only, the only other choice there, Eileen, is to hide it, sweep it under the rug. You, you either can state what happened or you, or you hide it.
All right, uh, yep, next we have Terry Farrell.
Hi, thank you so much, Anthony, for allowing me to speak. Uh, I am Terry Farrell. I live at four oh four Hazel Avenue in Endicott, and, um, I definitely want to speak about the trees because I understand the importance of these residents and their concerns. These are their properties, and I know they take a lot of, uh, pride in them. Um, many people come into the area because of the aesthetics of properties, and I just so happen to have a background in environmental forestry, so I do understand the importance of trees. Um, I felt that after learning about the concerns from the residents, uh, Heather Stanley reached out to me and, you know, it was really kind of like an all-hands-on-deck. What can we do to prevent this from ever happening again? And how can we not only protect the trees in our area, but, uh, you know, make all of our residents happy about living here? Because that's the ultimate goal. So, we felt that it was a great opportunity to educate our communities and raise awareness, not only to the importance of trees, but preserving our natural habitats and enhancing our neighborhood aesthetics. Um, so, one thing that I learned, I reached out to some former classmates of mine from the Environmental Science and Forestry College. Uh, her, one of the people that I spoke to, Marie Rockerback, she works with Davy Resource Group, and they actually helped Binghamton become a tree, a tree cit- a shady tree commission. And basically, what that entails is becoming a Tree City USA. Uh, very important. There are so many import, uh, so many, uh, benefits to becoming a Tree City USA. It's going to cut energy consumption, uh, boost property values, build stronger ties to our neighborhoods, educate people living in our city about the values of trees, and the importance of sustainable development. Uh, the way to become a Tree City USA, they have been one for over twenty years. There are no other shady tree commissions in Brown County, um, in our proximity, in the southern tier. Um, how do we do that? There are four criteria. Um, number one, municipalities just need to have a budget for trees, and doing some type of work with trees, whether they're putting down, planting, any type of tree maintenance. Um, and then the third thing is, they have to have a tree board or a committee, and the fourth thing, an Arbor Day event. So, with that, we are organizing, I wrote a proposal, uh, to, initially, I did write it to the village board, but our time strengths are kind of limited, um, and we really want to get this going because there is a grant involved. We will get a thousand dollars to plant these trees and we'll have a big day of it. Um, we worked with the Town of Union. They were able to make a decision to have this event. Uh, so, we decided it'll take place on May first at Glendale Park, and that's a Saturday. We've got the Parks and Recreation of the Town of Union involved. We have the school district involved. We have a biology professor. Uh, we have the residents of Endicott. In fact, Nikki Wales is on our committee. We have, uh, high school ambassadors. We have the Girl Scouts. We've got little junior ambassadors. We're going to have a poster contest. We are going to have a proclamation to talk about why Arbor Day is important. And, you know, we're going to invite our legislators, our representatives, our Town of Union, our village board members, everybody and anybody who wants to come out and support this. Um, this is going to be an amazing thing for our community. And it's going to turn something that could have been negative into something really positive because it really is about educating. And, um, you know, trees, urban forestry is my wheelhouse, so it was really great to be able to reach out to some of the people that could support this project. Um, it's a thousand dollars. It doesn't cost our, um, you know, Town of Union any money to have, hold this event. This is everything that our community is going to come together to do. Uh, so I think that, you know, I hear the residents and when they have concerns, and especially when it comes to trees, because let's face it, you know, they help shade our homes, our business and streets. They clean our air and water. They increase our property values, reduce energy costs, make our neighborhoods greener, safer, healthier. They provide homes for our natural wildlife, right? So, nobody is going to say no to an Arbor Day event. And what I feel is going to be so important is next year, we're going to duplicate this event, and we're going to have it in the village. And I'd love to do it at Mercero Park. Got a lot of great things that we've been working on as a community together. I just, I really appreciate this new board, um, with all of the new ideas and the community coming together to just, you know, make a better vision for Endicott. And, you know, I, and I also did volunteer my time on the Parks and Recreation. Thank you, Nick Burlingame, for that. And maybe I can get on the water board in the future as well. Like, I, I, I know I have some extra time, but I want to thank everybody, um, you know, because this really is a, it's all hands on deck, and this is a community. This will be a really great community event, so, hope everyone can be there.
Yeah, and I wanted to thank you, Terry, for the booklet you put together for me. Um, I didn't even realize there was some kind of a deadline involved, but I don't, I think by the time I got it, it was maybe only a week or so ago, so, but I like the idea of that project.
Okay, I want to make a statement so everybody will understand. One person or even a whole street cannot put themselves above the rest of the village. These trees were causing damage to our infrastructure and causing all the village taxpayers money to fix them, plus taking our men away from the jobs they should be doing, like paving streets and putting in new water systems, because heaven knows we need a lot of work on our water, as well as the other people who had to pay for their laterals to be cleaned. Our village employees were spending countless hours on one street cleaning sewers, trimming trees. Our light department told me they spent one month just trimming those trees from interfering with the wires. The decision was made by three village departments. It is their job to protect the village property. I told them I agree. I had many conversations with Mrs. Wales trying to explain. I've talked to Cornell already about trees that can be replaced, those taken down, but we're not interested with our infrastructure. Our infrastructure, especially our water, has so many places to put the money on repairs. We cannot afford to spend it by constantly repairing those sewers. We're doing the best we can with the money we have, but we're trying to be fair to all the village residents, not just some people on one street. I'm sorry, but that's what we have to look at. We have no choice but to do, worry about all the residents, not just one street of residents. So, thank you so much.
Uh, yeah, Linda, the, uh, reports and things from the different departments is fine, but, um, I think they should be talking to the board and not just one person, especially when we're talking about thirty-five trees on, on one street, which is really only a two-block-long street.
They didn't even have to talk to me. They didn't even have to talk to me. They could have just done it, so, um.
I think right now, right now, they're probably.
We'll have to work on that. So, who's anybody next there?
Moving forward, we'll work on that. I myself have been the victim of trees being cut down, and it is shocking. And, and I was not, and this is probably twenty-five years ago, I was not told by anybody. I came home from Arbor Day.
Linda, one person talked to you.
But, um, they planted new trees, and yes, it's taken quite some time for them to be beautiful again, but I understand the frustration and I empathize. Um, moving forward. All right, let's get some trees planted and rebuyify again.
Okay.
And put some procedures in place.
Correct.
So that.
Correct. That doesn't happen again. Correct. Correct.
All right, um, next I have Diane Hunter.
Hi, my name is Diane Hunter, and I reside at five nineteen and a half East Main Street. I wanted to, um, thank Nikki and, um, Heather for their work on this project, and I've actually spoken with Nikki on the phone, and she's very professional, and she's a very, very concerned community member, and she's talked to me about this tree situation as well as, um, you know, involved herself in a, in a conversation in regards to our general community, a large. Um, I think what she was most concerned about is the insensitivity at which she was met. Um, the statement that three different, um, community agencies were consulted or did write-ups or whatever, made this decision. I'm not quite sure that this was told to Nikki when she first addressed the situation on South Street. Um, I believe that what she was told was that this was a decision solely of the mayor's, and that's all that the mayor said to her. Um, so I, I think that that was the, the main, uh, problem with the way the situation was handled. Um, and I am really happy to see the work that Terry Farrell has done on this, and, and really, really excited to see this Arbor Day event take place and, um, but I still think that some of this unilateral, um, decision-making really needs to be, um, really closely monitored by somebody. And, and in keeping with your, um, professional, uh, rules here, it's really hard when there's one particular person making the decisions, not to really name that person, and, um, like Ted said, you know, it's kind of impossible when one person is saying that they're the sole person responsible for these decisions, not to really name that person and make them accountable for their actions. That being said, I still really have not really found out what happened in regards to the meeting that the attorney took over, um, as well as Nick, um, had to end when our, our mayor and, um, trustee Connectney disappeared. I'm kind of trying to look to see what the trustees will do when this happens again. I do not believe that an attorney should be running a meeting, and I believe that some procedure has to be ta- put in place in case the mayor and deputy mayor are not available to run a meeting again. And I'm wondering what, if anything, has been done or looked into about that, and that's all I have to say for today.
Yeah, Diane, just so you know, on this new, on our new meeting rules, the reason we passed the meeting rules was because we chose to not adopt Robert's Rules of Order. And Rob- Robert's Rules is what a lot of places use to run their meetings. So we made up our own meeting rules, and, um, the rule that regarding that is when the mayor is not there, the deputy mayor runs the meeting. And when the deputy mayor is not there, when they're both not there, then the, the remaining three people votes for someone to run that particular meeting. And that night, um, we voted for Nick to run that meeting.
Yeah, I think what Diane is referring to is probably when we went through the seeker process, you read the bullets and we voted on them. I think that's probably what she's referring to.
Well, that, that's not unusual. I mean, I, typically I'll do that. I, I read the seeker questions.
Yeah.
And you guys answer them. That's.
Yeah.
That's not running in the meeting, helping you walk through the secret.
In, in a timely fashion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I don't understand.
All right, then we'll close the first hearing with visitors, and we'll go on to our resolution. Now, the first one we have is the snow removal equipment for the airport.
I'd make a motion to accept the snow removal, removal equipment for the Tri-Cities Airport. I'd make a motion to accept the snow removal equipment for the Tri-Cities Airport.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next resolution is to set up a commission for the Zero Waste Commission and the Parks Commission. Can we put these both together, though, cause they're-
Yeah, yup, it, it's one resolution and both of them are, are listed right on the resolution.
Okay, thank you. I'd like a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to accept the Zero Waste Commission and Parks Commission.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
All right, now, our next one is the, on the lead agency status for Sky Island Drive.
I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Trustees as the lead agency for the Sky Island Drive project.
I'll second it.
Roque, Christie Connectney?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Now, and the next one is appointing members for the Parks Advisory Commission.
I'll make a motion to accept the members to the Parks Advisory Commission.
I'll second it.
Roque, Christie Connectney?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Now, we have no unfinished business. So, now on our new business, trustee Burlingame has got the first couple of things here. So, Nick, would you like to take over and-
Sure, the first one is the boardroom, conference room schedule. I would like to open the conversation about transparency. I believe the village residents should be aware of all meetings that are being held in the municipal building. I understand that some of these meetings are not open to the public. However, I believe that the resident should still have the right to know that the meeting is- I'd like to see the municipal boardroom and conference rooms will be posted on the Village of Endicott website. If the meeting is not open to the public, the calendar should reflect that. I believe that the Village of Owigo, City of Binghamton, Town of Vestal, and Town of Windsor already do that.
We've been behind the scenes for a long time.
Yeah, and I, I just think it's time to shed a little light on it. I would like to make a motion to have the boardroom and conference room schedule be posted on the Village of Endicott website calendar if the meeting is scheduled three or more days in advance. Any meeting that is not open to the public must be indicated.
What'd you say, Nick? Not open to the public must be what?
Must be indicated on the calendar.
Okay, okay.
So, it's indicated if it's not open?
If it's not open to the public.
Uh, so that was, Nick made the motion?
Roque, Christie Connectney?
Yeah.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Okay, we've got the next one too, Nick.
Okay. The next one is media company, social media. So, in the spirit of cleaning up the image of Endicott, we need to start by cleaning up the loose ends regarding the village website and social media pages. Posts with spelling errors and whatnot. It, it has come to my attention that someone within the administration has taken it upon themselves to respond to residents who contacted the Village of Endicott via Facebook Messenger. Some of the responses have been rude, inappropriate, and ultimately reflects poorly on the village. With that being said, with the consensus of the village board, I would like our attorney Bob to draft a municipal social media policy to be voted on at a later date. And I would also like to enact a couple of motions. But is everyone okay with Bob starting a social media policy? I think that's probably standard within a municipality.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I have no problem drafting that. And I, I think it's actually a very good idea to have a policy. That way, we can address some of the issues before they arise and just have a standard procedure. So, I'd certainly do that.
Okay, and at least in the interim, I'd like to make a couple of motions until that policy is put in place. I make a motion to remove administrative access from all elected officials on the Village of Endicott Facebook page.
Say that again?
I would like to remove administrative access from all elected officials on the Village of Endicott Facebook page. Do something, you know.
I'll second it, Nick.
Media company, we pay them.
Right, right. No, I think that's a good idea, Nick. No, that's good.
I don't, I don't go on Facebook too much.
I'll, I'll second it, Nick.
Motion second, Roque, Christie Connectney?
Yes. Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
And I would like to make a motion to have the village manager contact our media company, Rose Ansal Advertising, Inc., and disable the private message feature on the Village of Endicott Facebook page. And if that's not possible, set an auto-response message that states that this is an unmanned inbox and to contact the Village of Endicott by phone or email with a list of contact numbers.
I'll second it.
Look at you go.
You better believe it.
Your face, your clip phone doesn't have messenger, don't worry.
I'll let you have the bills back next week, Arlene.
Woo-hoo. I don't wanna steal your, I would never wanna steal your thunder, Ted.
No, that's okay.
And if that's not possible-
Then do the auto-response.
Yeah, nice.
Cause there's a general one now.
That way, yeah, exactly. Cause you have village phone numbers, email addresses, whatever you deem appropriate.
Okay.
I hate Facebook, so I think that's-
Motion second, we'll do Roque, Christie Connectney?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
And Christie Warner?
Yes.
And lastly, I make a motion for a village manager to contact our media company, Rose Ansal Advertising, Inc., and have them change the password and/or sign-on credentials to the Village of Endicott Facebook page. And have them provide the updated password only to the village manager and a designated employee of his choosing. The new password is not to be distributed to any Village of Endicott elected official.
Wow, good job, Nick.
I didn't even know there was a password.
Let's just ask, ask him if he's willing to do that.
I'll step up and second that one.
Okay, I didn't know we did, okay. Obviously, you're the only one who has it right now, anyway.
So, the media company is, is gonna need to have a password, right?
Yeah, and they have it already.
Okay.
They should be the only ones to have it. We don't have it now.
My concern with them being the only ones having it is if we ever terminated a contract with them in the future.
Ah, gotcha.
Have access to it.
That's true, yeah, that's true. I was gonna say, I didn't even know they had one.
So, the, so the password would be maintained by the media company and the village manager? Is that what you're saying? And that's it?
I think so.
Yeah, that's enough.
Yeah, I mean, there's one, we can get into, but there'd be one person here that I would vote to if we had to put something out or get anything. So, and then if that person manages another Village of Endicott page, so. You know.
Got it.
Department, I'll say, so I'd like to- So, there would be three people with a password. It'd be the media company, you, village manager-
And like backup or something. Yeah, an employee, not an elected official, an employee of his choosing. And I don't need to know who that is. So, next, is the motion that I have a second on that?
Sure, I'll second that.
Roque, Christie Connectney?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Did you wanna do a motion for me to draft the social media policy?
Sure, I'll make a motion to have Bob, our attorney, draft a municipal social media policy.
I'll second it.
Roque, Christie Connectney?
Yes.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Is there anything else? Nick, Nick, you'd like?
That is all I have.
Oh, darn.
You gotta be kidding, Nick. You got more, don't you?
Well, we'll give him a little more.
He's taking almost as much time as Ted does.
Yeah.
He's got a lot more done.
Look at that.
I wanna keep that title.
Right.
And, you know, just so everyone knows, this is really to improve the, the image of Endicott. And transparency, that's why I'm doing these.
Well, you know, six years ago, we didn't even have a Facebook page. I mean,
No.
We didn't have that. We, it wasn't available. And even if it was available, it was met with stiff arms.
Now, we have to, this number C, now, now, Bob, why, why is this on you? Cause we're not voting, correct?
Right.
Right, that's just introducing the law, so you can see what the law looks like.
Okay.
It's not to be voted on, but it just, all laws have to be introduced before they're approved. And so, and there's an aging period, so this just kind of gets that covered.
So, there's no action we need to take.
No action.
Okay.
Now, we come to the new agenda, and, and Ted, why don't you take over because you have an idea of how to blend the two?
Yeah, I'll do the number F first, which is the agenda. I, I emailed this out to everybody. It's, it's kinda written up in a formal way of, of passing, proposing this resolution. It's the same agenda we've been using for, same agenda we've been using since February fifteen. But one, one item is added, item number seven, gets plunked in the middle there for special presentations, which was kinda, which was like the one we did tonight. So, now it's on there officially for future presentations, and we know where it will be on them. And it's there right near the beginning of the meeting, so these people who come in with presentations don't have to sit around and listen to our meeting. They can do their presentation and then they can leave. So, I would make a motion that we pass this new agenda effective immediately going into the future for board meetings.
I'll second that. Motion second, Roque?
Sure.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
I'm over the agenda.
Yes.
So, over the agenda.
So, the second one, this is the third, this is our third version of the meeting procedures. I emailed these out. These also have the, kind of a formal, couple paragraphs at the beginning noting that it's a resolution. The changes for this version three is that we are allowed to adopt a standard agenda, which we just did. And as far as work sessions go, I think we all decided, or maybe someone can tell me for sure. I thought we decided to disband work sessions unless someone wants to call one. Is that, did we do that formally?
Um, we do not do it formally.
Okay, so we should do that. We should do that. I'll do that right after I do this one then. But this one says that if we do, once we vote them, once we don't have work sessions, you can, two, two board members can call a work session if we ever need to. Pretty much under the same guidelines as calling a special meeting. And then the third-
Or you can send four dollars and fifteen cents and send it to me. Sorry, Ted.
Yeah, I know. I changed it so we, I changed it so it's under by mail. It doesn't have to be by certified mail. And then the third change is the, kind of a summary of Bob's letter that, which I talked about earlier tonight in reference to the board advisory meetings and that they are not open to the public and, but they are board-approved committees. So, I would make a motion that we, that we approve these, this version three. It rescinds all previous meeting procedures that we've passed. So, I would make a motion that we pass this.
I'll second that.
Are you sure, Ted? Because I don't wanna deal with procedure meetings anymore. Is this it? The final offer?
I doubt if it'll be the last one.
Oh, I do.
Things, things will pop up, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
Roque, Christie-
Sure, gladly.
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes. And then I will make a motion that we forego future work sessions unless someone calls it according to the rules that we just passed.
I'll second that.
Roque, Christie Connectney?
Sure.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Christie Warner?
Yes.
Now, in order for us to use the mayor's net, just be something that's done, be out ahead.
Yes.
Yeah, that's nice.
Cause I do like that.
It's very nice, very clean. I didn't even know the village had a-
Didn't either.
Nice.
In, he, we, he gave it to me.
Nice.
He gave it to me.
Mm-hmm, nice. Okay.
Now, are we talking anymore about the trees or are we done with that for tonight, Ted?
I'm sorry, Linda?
Uh, number G, the tree removal, are we talking anymore about the trees or are we done for that for tonight?
Uh, no, I had that on there, but I don't have the proper wording to make a resolution for. So, I'll, we'll cross that off the list. And, but I also would like to cancel the, the special meeting we had for Wednesday, March three.
I didn't either.
Okay, good enough.
I'll second that, sorry. Roque, Christie Connectney?
Sure.
Christie Burlingame?
Yes.
Christie Warner? Christie Warner?
Yes.
That was in here. Woo-hoo. It's so easy to contact, really? Just call me. Okay.
Okay, now we'll close the second hearing, visitors, and now we come to comments. I think we've talked a lot. Anything else to say, Eddie?
No.
Do you have anything you'd like to say, Nick?
I just wanna say for the people who probably missed that during communications for filing, we received bad from the New York State Department of State, a local law one has been officially filed. And that was a local law regarding recycling. So, I just wanted to make note of that, and that's all I have.
Okay, Ted, have you got anything you'd like to say?
Good, thanks.
How about you, Ted? Do you have anything you wanna say?
Uh, yeah, I had one thing that I wanted to say was in the, in the meeting procedures, which we just passed the third version tonight, we had a rule that we put in there that the board members would not interrupt other individuals who are talking during the meetings. And I'd like to congratulate the board, I think, to this meeting and the last meeting. I think it's worked far beyond and far quicker than I ever thought it would. So, I think we are on our track to run a professional, dignified, where, what's our point number ten? Decorum professionalism, honesty, integrity, and good judgment. I think we're on track setting a, a pattern for the rest of the village. Or I think we have our board meetings, starting to do that now. And I congratulate the board for doing that.
All we need is for you to show up and we can all be complete.
I'm in the high-risk group, you know.
So am I.
We'll, we'll just wait till the governor gives us permission. I, I don't, I don't want anybody to be uncomfortable. This is way too serious a disease.
But you are missing a lot of fun, Ted.
You are, we're having a good-
Well, I actually would, I would love to show up because I know that I start talking when other people are talking and I don't even, I mean, when you're there, you can see that they're talking, but I-
Right, right, that's true.
Very good. I just wanna make sure, do we have a meeting scheduled now for the twenty-ninth for, for that? We need a special meeting scheduled for that night. Uh, did, did we, did we schedule that?
No, not scheduled.
If we did, I'll make a motion to schedule a special meeting for the twenty-ninth.
What time do you guys want it? Do you want it at five or six? What time do you guys want it? Do you want it at five or six?
I, I think six is better.
Okay.
Okay.
Personally.
Okay.
3:29 and 5:00?
Yeah, that's fine.
And this is, this is to approve the police release.
I'll second that, Anthony.
Yeah, thank you.
That's the 29th of May?
March.
March?
I mean, March. March, okay.
Oh, Lord.
Hey, Roque, trustee connecting?
Yes.
Trustee Birlingay?
Yeah.
Trustee Dornor? Trustee Warner?
Yes. Anthony, how many motions have we had tonight?
I don't know, a lot.
Way too many.
But I want one more, I mean, connect me.
Oh, I make a motion to adjourn. You can't take it, Ted!
You would have to add one more.
Uh-huh.
I'll second it.
Anybody second me?
Second.
You got the second. All right. You got the second.
Really?
Everyone a first, Roque?
Yes.
On that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Very good. We're all leaving smiling again. Woo-hoo!
Check, check, check. Hey, friends, why am I so dark? Let me see if I can improve that. I'm sorry about that. Uh, dark. So I just want to say something here, uh, but I need to, uh, get rid of that. I need to, I need to clean up my screen a little bit. So that one is virtual cable microphone. What's going on? I'm just not seeing. Standby. That's the one I wanted to get rid of. But then where's my fancy background? Where's my animated, um, animap? There it is. Boom. Okay, that's getting better, 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 better. There's just something I want to say here, and I want to make sure. I'm trying to get my, uh, I want to make sure the, uh, you, that you can see me. I'm sorry. Standby, standby. Um, standby. Okay, friends, uh, what'd you think about that meeting tonight? Did you sit through it? Boy, you ought to get an award to sit through these meetings. They're pretty tedious sometimes. Okay, okay, let's see here. And cancel that. There it is. Actions disable. Okay. There we go. That's a little bit better. Okay, so about the, um, okay, there we go. So this is, uh, concerning the, uh, what they did tonight was they basically gave over all access to their website. The website, all their social media accounts, they basically took, they gave away their own administrator privileges. Now there's only one person, that's Anthony Bates, that belongs to the village. The rest of it, like five accounts or more, I think it's five. I did a FOIL request, and I got this. All these people from, uh, Saul, what's the name of the company? It's a public relations firm in, uh, Binghamton. Saul. Um, no, not Saul Alinsky. Saul, um, gonna say Big, Big. Big Berton. Roseanne Saul. Roseanne Saul Advertising, okay? A public relations firm owns all of our social media for the Village of Endicott. And nobody batted an eye. Nobody sees a problem with that? I mean, maybe you have to actually study the public relations industry, and I guess I've done that before. But the public relations industry is really a pretty, uh, devious operation. They're agents of, uh, disinformation and misinformation, and they do corporate public, they do corporate propaganda. They sanitize the reputations of these, some of the most horrible corporate polluters and, uh, people, you know, these businesses that really abuse, uh, uh, human rights and workers' rights. And do all, commit all kinds of, uh, devious, uh, you know, shady business deals. And that's what they do. They're sanitation workers, uh, they're spin doctors. These public relations firms, they have numerous conflicts of interest. In other words, these PR firms represent all the law fir, all the big law firms in town. They represent dozens of local businesses. And these are businesses that the village, it's, you know, developers and, and different things that the Village of Endicott does business with. This is a conflict of interest. This needs to be disclosed. So the, I mean, didn't we learn our lesson with, uh, Stephen Donnelly and Associates and Sungeal? Stephen Donnelly and Associates was managing the Village of Endicott's, uh, uh, communication tools, social media tools, the website, Facebook page. This public relations firm with a direct conflict of interest. What was that conflict of interest, Bill? Well, Stephen J. Donnelly and Associates had a client called Sungeal. They were the incinerator that wanted to come to town. So, wait a minute, what? The incinerator company that's basically working with the DEC to railroad this, to fast-track this permit into Endicott, getting the Endicott special with the DEC, they're all working in collusion together, hires a public relations firm, Stephen J. Donnelly, who happens, who, who has the permit basically to put, to cite this facility in the Village of Endicott, which nobody wants. But the guy working for the incinerator company is running the Village of Endicott website and, and social media, and he just happened to ban me, the biggest critic of Sungeal. So we didn't learn our lesson from that? That's what these public relations firms do. They work in the benefit of their clients, and their clients is every kind of business. They're almost like, uh, you know, these 501(c)(6) organizations, these business leagues, chambers of commerce, or, uh, trade organizations, you know, like, uh, there's lots of different ones. They are incredible aggregations of wealth and therefore power. It's not a good idea for public relations firms, you know, crisis communications. We specialize in crisis. Maybe I should call that up. Let's call up Roseanne Saul Advertising, and let's see who their client list is. Let's do that right now, okay? Roseanne Saul Advertising. So let me put this over here. And now let me go back to, after I get rid of it. Okay. There we go. Let's go, zoink. And zoink. And zoink. Alrighty. Alrighty then. So I don't know why this is coming up blank. Here we go. Our agency, digital advertising. See, that's what they do. Roseanne Saul is a full-service agency with more than 35 years of advertising and marketing. In other words, you know, uh, advertising is lies. Marketing is lies. That's what it is. It's not complete, it's not the complete truth. You're trying to say that brand A's aspirin is better than the generic aspirin. Well, that's, that's missing or incomplete information. These paid communications are, it's propaganda by definition. There's almost no, uh, difference between the kind of, um, I would say, oops, where did that go? There it is. Okay. There's really very little difference between the following things. Advertising, propaganda, and military psyops. And all you have to do is look into the history. Edward Bernays, okay, he's the head, he was the father of modern public relations. He was the guy that was figuring out ways how to sell tobacco by having movie stars like Ronald Reagan advertise them, and cowboys, and, uh, showing these liberated women smoking, that kind of thing. That's the public relations industry. That's what they do. They work on behalf of industry. They are never on the side of environmentalists. They are always on the side of the environmental polluters. They're not unbiased. They're connected. They've got all kinds of connections. Let's, let's go ahead. Let's keep on looking at this thing. Let's find the connections, because I found it before. Graphic design, video and sound. So let's see, public relations. Here we go. Learn more. This is their primary. They do digital communications. Here we go. Public relations, uh, communications that connect. Uh, we bring vast media experience. And look, they're connected to, there's, uh, Jason Shaw, and there's Jason Garner, and who's this guy? This is the guy that used to be on city council, right? Binghamton City Council? I forget his name. Um, media releases and distribution, crisis communications, right? Crisis communications. This is one of the most devious things, because this is when, you know, something explodes, or 100 people get sick, or, you know, there's a really serious problem. They just, you know, dumped a few thousand gallons of solvent into the river. That's when they call the crisis communications people. There's no reason why a village needs a public relations firm. That's, that ain't good. Okay, so I sort of understand what the village, there's a couple of things. I understand the, the, the goal to, uh, sort of like promote the best in the village. So that is, uh, uh, what you hire a public relations firm to do. You don't hire the, uh, the PR firm to run your social media, I don't think. Maybe that is a smart thing to do. I think we need to discuss it, because these people have conflicts of interest, which means there's a potential situation like Sungeal and Stephen J. Donnelly, where them having access to, uh, you know, they could potentially delete files, uh, that, you know, having to do with, uh, you know, permits or something, you know? Who knows what it could be? The conflicts of interest and their basic function as agents of propaganda, agents of BS. That's what they are. They're agents of misinformation and spin doctoring. That's what public relations is, people. That's not, I, I just can't imagine why a village needs crisis communications. What we need is, we need the village officials to do their job, and then just tell the truth and communicate that to the press. Industry publication placements? Industry publication, I guess that's advertising. Events planning, public speak, speaking and presentation training, sponsorships, ads, okay? Ads are propaganda, advertising, and media relations, and public relations, and crisis communications, and military psyops all has, have a common origin, and it's Edward Bernays. He wrote the book called Propaganda. So I'm very upset that the village gave up. There's one person in the village now that has, this is the other thing I wanted to say, okay? There's one person in the village right now that has access, has administrative access to the village's own website. What? I mean, you have, I understand, so there is a problem. I agree that there's a problem. I understand what the problem is, and we all agree what the problem is. But this is the wrong solution to the problem. You don't give away administrative privileges to some private firm that has many conflicts of interest. That's what we're going to do. Let's go find the client list. That was up here, right? That's what we're going to do. Our clients. Let's look at this. Let our experience work for you. Okay, Alums Furniture, Go-to-Sleep Gallery, whatever. What's this one? Uh, how, uh, some kind of insurance company? Can't zoom in on that for some reason. I can't make it bigger. Maybe I can make it bigger like this. But then I'll be chopped. Uh, Harding Brooks Insurance Agency, Delta Engineering. See, there you go. Delta Engineering is a company that the Village of Endicott contracts with. Coughlin &amp; Gerhart. Our attorney works for Coughlin &amp; Gerhart, I'm pretty sure. Uh, I'm pretty sure. Should I check that? Make sure I don't give you any, uh, bogus information. How about? Uh, CG Law. Yep. Coughlin &amp; Gerhart. That's what I thought, okay? So the SEP Group, they were on, uh, the nursing homes, I think. Horizons Credit Union. Does the village have, you know, business with Horizons? BC Transit, Comfort &amp; Sun Jewelers, Comfort Gifts. Who else? Ah. Come on. What's going on? There we go. Uh, where is my, there it is. Um, SEP Group, uh, Mercy House, Serve Pro, I don't know. Uh, Perna Dental. But this is, is this a, a complete list of their clients? Uh, I don't know. I don't think they're representing that this is a complete list of Botnik Chevrolet. What was this one? Uh, some psychic? Is that what it says? Psychic? Binghamton Psychic. Okay, so how do I, now I can't. Sorry about that. Give me a sec. I gotta see my back button. Okay, now, over here. Let our experience. So I'm just saying that, okay, Cellular One, I don't even think the Cellular One even still exists. Giant doesn't still exist. Manly's Mighty Mart. So the whole point is, friends, that these, um, these public relations firms are paid liars. That's what they are. They're paid liars for industry. Do we want to have paid liars for industry running the village communication tools? That's what I want to know. Because I'm not sure that, that, uh, what the hell, uh, Roseanne Saul Advertising, Inc., a for-profit company, necessarily has the same, uh, goals and the same duties as do elected officials and village employees. They've got a completely different set of rules that they're operating under. They're working for profit, and they have lots of other clients in town, and that's probably not a complete list. So just like what happened with Sungeal, what happens if, you know, what happens if, you know, what did we say? Delta Engineering. I don't know what kind of conflicts of interest Delta Engineering might, might have, but Delta Engineering is giving these people money. These people are now running the village communication tools, and by the way, the village, you know, it's just, it's, it's too much power in the hands of a private company. It's not us. It's not the village. It's not the government. We're delegating full privileges, administrative privileges, to a private corporation. This doesn't sound like a good idea to me. So that's it. That's all I wanted to say. Let me just check the chat and make sure that there isn't people. Are there people? Are there people? So now I gotta come over here and get this window back. How do I do that? Standby. So let's come over here. And then bring the window back. Just gonna check the chat. I don't see any people. So one, one person is still watching, so, okay. Uh, I'll see you later, friends. I'm gonna sign off, and I'm just gonna play this, and see you later. Be sure to hit the like button, friends. Thumbs up this video and share it out, please. And don't forget to subscribe to the Bill Houston Podcast on YouTube. Click on the bell and select all notifications. And please donate if you can to support my work. Donations in any amount are greatly appreciated.